been returned.
We've, we have already had the buses?
Yeah, we had them. They were our buses. We had them for the full five years and we just kept them. So this is just the extension that they've gotten us through until the new ones could come in.
Okay, this isn't for new buses that we should be getting, okay.
Nope, no, this is what we have.
All right.
Oh yeah, so I kind of didn't answer the question.
That's what I was gonna, I thought these were replaced. We were losing ten and picking up ten.
Right. Right, no, but these are the ones that we've had that we've just had to keep.
Got it.
Yep, sorry.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Okay, I need a second for the motion with the personnel items removed.
I'll second.
Mr. Skorzinski?
Aye.
Ms. Voss?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mr. Shaneberg?
Aye.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Just clarifying the record. Did we have a motion, an initial motion or just a second there?
Yeah, it was a motion.
That was the motion, okay, thank you. Okay, so for this month's personnel report?
Yeah, the personnel.
Yeah. It is your traditional list of new hires for both licensed and non-licensed personnel. You can see the resignations of one coach, not instructional coach, an extracurricular coach, as well as some licensed and non-licensed staff there. And then on the third page... I'm sorry. Sorry, the resignations begin on the third page. I believe there were leaves that were approved there in the middle. So that's what we have for you this month.
Yes, I need a motion to approve the personnel report.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second, Ed.
Mr. Skorzinski?
Aye.
Mr. Shaneberg?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Ms. Voss?
Aye.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye. Motion passed.
So we are up to the strategic plan update. So this month is when we plan to bring you an update on strategic goal number three. Sarah Massey was not able to be with us tonight as she's traveling back from a family event that she had out of town. But I believe Dr. Staub is going to start off this, this presentation.
Yes, and Dr. Chesrick's gonna help me with it as well, as we're going through... When we talk about strategic goal number three, we are talking about the work environment. So we're looking to create a supportive and productive work environment in which student-focused staff are engaged, collaborative, innovative, and accountable. So as we continue to go through there, we're really focusing this month on looking at our pillars of professional development. So you can see that we have four pillars that we're focused on this year that we've been building over the last several years. So the Menoka Place courses, the university cohort programs that we have offered to our staff, workshops and sessions by our own staff for our own staff, and then the instructional coaches. When we look at those Menoka Place courses that have been offered in the fall of '22, so this fall, you can see that we have four, or I'm sorry, six classes that we're offering here this year. These courses are taught by our staff, for our staff, and aligned to the needs of our staff in our district. And the beauty that we've made a partnership with the University of St. Francis, we can teach these courses and then the teachers earn college credits for this. So it's something that advances the teachers along as well, is provides them that opportunity for college credit. But it's kind of a marriage of both worlds and a beautiful thing because we're able to offer what we need here within our district and then they get the college credit on the end of completing these courses.
So a quick question. So the participants, do they sign up for it or are they required? So this is, it's optional to whatever they want to use, whatever ones they want to do?
Yeah.
Do they can do multiple?
They can do, yes. They can't repeat a course, but they can do multiple different courses. These do not lead towards like an additional endorsement or an additional degree, but it does allow our staff to earn college credits. So what they, what we do three times a year, and it might go through this later on in the presentation, so I might be doing a slide that we'll look at later on, but three times a year, we align to the university's semesters. So we have a spring, a summer, and then a fall semester. We send out questionnaires to our staff who would be interested in teaching a course. And the university has requirements for our staff to be able to teach those courses, one of which is that they have to have a master's that would apply to the area that they're teaching. The second one would be that they have to go through a course with a trainer from the university, which I facilitate that. And I work with our teachers here to develop their skills, help them write a syllabus, help them write course content, and then their assignments. And then again, that all aligns to what USF already has in place to earn those college credits.
Staff members who take these classes move on salary schedule too?
Yes, they can, yep.
How many semester hours is it worth?
So most of them are worth two credit hours. You'll see the Live Long and Mentor, Mentor, which is for our mentors that are coaching our new staff. That is a three-credit hour class because it is a more substantial program. And then the same with the Survive and the Thrive and Survive class, that is also three credit hours because it's a more substantial program. Those both involve observations within the classrooms as well. It aligns to our mentor program that we have for all of our new staff within the district. So yeah, most are two-credit hours, those two are three. And then you can also see we have, this year we've had a great number of participants, but this is something we've been doing for about four years now. And they, we've just seen this grow and grow and grow. Each semester, we have new courses for our staff to be able to complete.
Do we fill the class each time?
Yes. Yep. And if what we try to do is we'll run it, we've always said we'll run it if, as long as we have five participants and we haven't had to cancel any. So then, actually, I think this talks a little bit about it here. So the Menoka Place partnership. So it is with the University of St. Francis and we started it in the fall of 2018. So far, we've had 20 instructors that have led 64 courses. So yeah, it's, it's a lot of opportunity for our staff.
So you know how many students were, I mean, total so far from 2018?
We counted, so this is a part of our reporting that I have to do at the end of each year. So last year alone, we had over 280, now this could be...
Seats.
Seats, yeah. So I could take two or three classes, but over 280 seats were filled in through our courses.
That's good.
So this is the University of St. Francis cohort program. We saw a need in our district for additional staff to complete English as second language classes. We've had a huge increase in the amount of students that are considered ESL or multilingual. So our multilingual director came to me and said, "I would love to see more teachers have this endorsement or this certification." So we reached out to the University of St. Francis and they said, "We have this program already. We would love to do a cohort in your, in your district." So in this, the staff are able to take these classes. This will all be run through USF, but we will just house the program. So they'll either meet here at district office or online. It's for any of our 201 employees. And then we can also have, if somebody like works for the cooperative, they're welcome to complete these as well. So it's not that it's just for Menoka 201, but we'll be offering it here within our district. And it'll result in an additional licensure or endorsement for our staff here in the district. Then these are some of our workshops and sessions that we wanted to highlight, that we have focused on this year. There has been much curricular trainings, and Dr. Chesrick is going to touch upon that in just a second here, including science of reading, and she can talk more about that as well. In my presentation that I shared with you guys earlier, or I'm sorry, in my board packet, I had shared with you guys the, that we started the ACEs training, and ACEs is adverse childhood experiences. And the research has shown that when a child has one of the 10 adverse childhood experiences in their background, that they can struggle with not only their social-emotional regulation, it can lead to difficulties in learning, it can lead to difficulties later on in life as well. And what we're learning as educators is that we want to help minimize the impact of these adverse childhood experiences. So we kicked off a three-hour training at the beginning of November. And then we'll do monthly trainings within our staff. We have staff members that are becoming ACEs trainers, that we're sponsoring them to be ACEs trainers and they're going to bring training back into our district with our staff to continue to focus on experiences and practical strategies to help support these students within the classroom environment. We've also done multicultural professional development and the Just Schools cohorts. And again, that's offering just additional training for our staff and practical strategies to use within the classroom. Understanding newcomers and oracy strategies. We've been bringing in a trainer, Dr. Rita Guzman, from the Joliet Professional Development Alliance. And she's been offering trainings to our staff, helping them understand our children that come to us with very little English background and helping to learn more about how do we best support those students within our classrooms. And then we just started our threat assessment trainings. We revised our threat assessment protocol this past year. And so we've started trainings on that to make sure that our staff not only know how to handle when we have a child that is either a threat to themselves or a threat to others, but then also how to identify any of those threats and the correct protocols that we go through with that. So Dr. Chesrick, do you want to speak a little bit more about the curricular trainings and the science of reading?
We're being recorded, so we will need it to be on a microphone, yes.
Hello? Back in August, we had several trainings that were offered to all of our new staff and staff that may have missed some of the trainings last school year with the introduction of all of the new curriculum programs. The month of August was pretty much dedicated to providing trainings in every one of the new programs for our teachers. So they spent a good part of a couple weeks in August going through the trainings. We also offered through our instructional coaches, a little bit of a refresh in August for staff, just to get them ready and started for having students with the new curriculum. So the coaches offered some training in August prior to the beginning of school. And since that time, the coaches have provided a variety of professional development opportunities for our teachers, one of them being on the science of reading. The science of reading is a shift from the balanced literacy-type instruction that our schools have dedicated to for about the past, I'll say, 15 to 20 years. It's a shift based on research in literacy. And it is a change for our staff, so our instructional coaches provided information. There is more of an emphasis on phonics and phonemic awareness. Our foundations program at K2 focuses on strong, explicit phonics instruction. And along with that, we provided a phonics screener for all of our K4 students. And we found some surprises in the results from that screener. We found that students at third and fourth grade may be missing some of those phonics skills and phonemic awareness that may be holding them back from being proficient readers. So we took the information from the phonics screener. And at K2, we have foundations, but in addition to that, teachers are using HIGGARDY, which is phonemic awareness. They spend about 10 to 15 minutes a day working on strictly phonemic awareness for students. And then even in third and fourth grade, the students who we found were lacking in some of those phonics skills, teachers are instructing them explicitly each day in a small group. So we'll be giving this phonics screener again in January, and we're hoping to see tremendous growth there so that especially at third and fourth grade, it could just mean a small session a day for a few weeks to pick up some of those skills that they may be missing, which could prevent them from decoding new words. So those are areas that we've been working on. The instructional coaches did a survey in October to find out other professional development that our teachers may be interested in. And so they've been working to provide that during lunchtime. They're doing pie and PD in the month of November. The topic is student engagement. So teachers actually have signed up to spend two or three sessions during a lunch period, and the coaches are providing them with pies during that time. But they signed up, I know over at OX, we had 24 teachers sign up to partake in that. I'm not sure on the numbers at each building, but they had a huge response. So they're trying to find what teachers are interested in and providing that extra bit of instruction and education in those areas.
So just a quick question. So back to the reading, is it, was it because of COVID, learning from home, that the kids were...
For the phonics?
Yeah, with the phonics?
You know, that may be a part of it for our third and fourth grade because, you know, we were remote for that period of time when they would be typically getting that phonics instruction. And it's different remotely, of course, than it is in person. So that would have been the time period that they would have been presented with the phonics instruction.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I believe within your board packet, you can, in this specific page, there's links in there, but in your board packet, I believe that Ms. Massey had included each of those links. So you can see all of the different sessions that we've offered, from the instructional coaches, our professional development year at a glance, and what we were able to offer for our staff at the beginning of the year, but then also throughout the year, what it'll look like. We kind of have a map of what our PD looks like all year. But we also didn't want to forget about our administrative team. And so we have included monthly administrative trainings such as instructional coaching. We've got some other ones that we're doing on understanding our new curriculum and look fours within that new curriculum. We'll be doing ones on ACEs specifically for our administrative staff, so whole school. What can our administrative staff do to ensure that we are not being triggers for trauma, rather that we are being supportive for our students that have ACEs in their background? And then we also have staff development from the seventh. You can see that full-day session and what occurred during those days. Any questions on the professional development of this year?
I'd just like to comment that you have so many programs that were never around in the past. And I really appreciate the fact that our staff gets this opportunity to progress and not just do the same thing over and over again. I really appreciate those programs.
They, well, and to be honest, we couldn't do it here out of district office without our staff and our administrative teams within the buildings being willing to lead a lot of this professional development. So it has been a whole district initiative for really bringing up a lot of leaders. So I appreciate that and I will definitely pass that thank you on to everybody.
Thank you.
Other questions for Dr. Staub or Dr. Chesrick? All right, the action item that we have for you tonight is the 2022 tentative tax levy.
Hi. So we gave you a preliminary look last month, so tonight, the recommendation has not changed. The only real new information that I'm bringing, I have been contacted by Grundy County now. I was waiting on their estimate. So I included that in the board docs. I'm using four and a half percent. To be honest with you, I'm still kind of digging into that because to me, it seems low. But to go ahead and give an estimate, I went ahead and used the four and a half. And then the other bit of new information is obviously that we did receive that appeal that the board approved previously tonight in the consent agenda from the Kendall Power Plant. So taking that into consideration and then the four and a half percent from Grundy County, I do think will be somewhere between eight and 10%. I do think there's a good chance, though, that we might even be a little bit higher if I found out any additional information about Grundy County. So I left the recommendation the same as I had it previously. So you'll see on the right-hand side, that's the proposed recommendation. So tonight, really, the approval is to put this on public display and then also publish the notice that we will have the levy hearing in December. And that would coincide with the regular board meeting on December 19th.
Questions over the tentative tax levy? Again, you're not approving the tax levy tonight. You are simply approving it in tentative form, allowing or establishing the date and time of the public hearing and approving the notice to go in the newspaper.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 tentative tax levy. Approval of public notice and established public hearing as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Shaneberg?
Aye.
Ms. Voss?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mr. Skorzinski?
Aye.
Mr. Satorius?
All right, the one other info item that, just wanted to make sure that you were aware of. Now that we've gotten past our October date where they kind of determine the first of the two enrollments that they use for the evidence-based funding, I wanted to at least bring forth enrollment. Four years ago, this is the meeting where we'd be doing enrollment projections, where we'd be using percentages to track forward students and, you know, based on the growth in our district and the growth trends that we've seen over years, this is how we think our populations are going to grow. And then the pandemic hit and districts, including ours and all throughout the suburbs in the nation, there's just been a shift in public school enrollment, you know, during the pandemic. So forecasting enrollment right now is very difficult. And so what I'm really, what I'm going to be doing with Mary is we plan for next year and with the principals and, and human resources to project staffing is just taking our current student population and rolling it forward into another grade level. But I thought I would at least walk you through kind of what we've seen at each of our schools and then down in the aggregate. So whoever's controlling the ship, can we go back up? Thank you much. So first is, you can see, well, Menoka Primary Center, remember, that's based on, you know, the students that come in that are identified as at-risk or low-income. It drives a lot of that, along with our tuition-based program, to where we bring in like and general education peers into those. So those are identified and that population will grow throughout the year as more students are identified through the screening process. So, you know, it's very possible by the time we get to the end of the year that we will be back over 300 students at MPC. But we show that there just because they do go into our student total. So OXable, you can see, the first of the columns is pre-pandemic, back on, you know, May of 2000, or I'm sorry, March of 2020, right before we started shutting things down here. And you can see, OXable was sitting at 657 students. I won't read all of these numbers for you, but at OXable, we currently have 623. You know, honestly, OXable is kind of bucking the trend of most of our schools where their enrollment is getting back to where it was, you know, pre-pandemic. You can see the total differential, the total differential, they're down 34 students overall, mostly in that third-grade class that, you know, the third grade in 2020 was 145, and now it sits at 108. If you, however, if you follow the cohorts as they, as they tracked through, that initial kindergarten class back in 2020 of 107 is 108 now. So the students that were with us back then, either through growth, you know, as some students moved to private or homeschool during the pandemic, some have come back, others, we did see growth in that area, down in the Hunter's Crossing region, south of Route 6, off of Hansel. But there, and even that first grade, has actually grown by three students over where it was before. So you can see net drop of 34 at OXable, but it seems to be growing back in. We just generally have some smaller primary grades across the district than we did before. Looking at Jones, you can see same overall effect, although the difference in the primary is a lot more noticeable than what it was. So Jones was at 642. That was a, that's a boundary for us that we had a little bit more of a transient population, at least of homeowners. We did hear that some of those homes up in the Jones area had been converted into rentals in some of those areas. So we don't know if those, if those folks moved on, or if it's just been a shift of the houses that are being built, they're just choosing not to use the public schools. But we had 642, now at 551. But those two cohorts are basically back, like OXable, back to where they were, you know, pre-pandemic overall. We just have much fewer kindergarten and first-grade students than we used to get at Jones. So, you know, those primary grades may be choosing homeschool or private, or we just had, you know, homeowners that didn't yet have families using the schools. Menoka Elementary, 568, now at 511, so another big drop, much like you saw at Jones. This was in the, the boundary of Menoka Elementary. Most of the cohorts and the grade levels are lower than they were pre-pandemic. So that's just a trend throughout the boundary of Menoka Elementary School. Looking at Walnut Trails, again, a drop, but again, it's the primary. And if you look at the difference in where first grade was to where it is now, it's that drop of 25 students. We did see an overall drop across the, the, the third-grade spectrum there, but it wasn't a cohort tracking. It was, you know, the cohort grew by 16 overall. There's just less than there, there were a few years back. So we'll, we'll look at elementary in total here in a sec. We can go to the intermediate school. You can see, we did have some larger grade levels move on from the intermediate. So we're down from the, the large total of 1,071 that we had, and we're currently sitting at 988. Our junior high school, still over 1,000 students. We were at 1104, we're now at 1,060. But you can see, looking at, the big difference down here to me is following those cohorts throughout. You know, the net difference pre-pandemic from the students that were with us back in 2020 to where they are now is just a drop of two, two students. The big difference is in new enrollments in the primary grades. And that's kind of what we've been seeing with the registrations, but tracking the cohorts really, really plays it out. So again, there's no action for you to do with this, but it just shows you that as we project forward, we've still got some higher numbers in our upper-grade levels, still over 500 students and nearing 500 in our top four-grade levels. But the, in, we're, we have to wait to see if we see the growth come back in those primary grades, if more people choose to re-enter the public school system as they progress into second or third grade, or if this becomes the new normal. So that's the enrollment report that we have for you tonight. Happy to take any questions over this.
So is, how is the building going? I mean, there's still houses being built. Does that slow down in the last six months with...
Well, no, I really can't say that it's down. It's shifted around. The Shanahan area has shifted. Hunter's Crossing is basically built out. As I drive through there, I really don't see much, much building going on down there. But they have moved up, I'm going to forget the name of the subdivision, but they're building off of Bell Road in the, on the Menoka side of things. I cannot remember the name. Anyone? I can't. Nope. I think, what's that?
Right, but are you speaking by the church?
Yes.
Yeah, Western Winds.
Yeah, West Wind is a...
West Winds.
Yeah, West Wind is a development that's been going for a little while. They've started another one down there as well that I cannot think of the name.
By Buena Vista.
Okay, there we go. Real estate, thank you much. We appreciate that. Always nice to have the input of our elf at our board meeting, so. In Menoka itself, not a lot of residential new permits that, that I'm aware of. I believe that the Buena Vista is still technically a Shanahan address. Shorewood continues to build out Town Center. They continue to build out down off of Mound, Mound Road. I don't know of any new subdivisions. We did have the, the mixed-use development off of 52, but that will only bring in a few like townhouse or condo-type properties into ours where we projected maybe a total of 13 students may come out of that. Joliet still has plenty of growth in the Lakewood Prairie area. They've still come in. I think they built, they bought out the last of the lots in one phase a few weeks ago, but there's still a lot of undeveloped land in that area. But we haven't seen any new plats or new proposed subdivisions come in. But we keep getting plenty of developer fees, you know, so the budget is still on track with developer fees. We just, it's become really hard to project the impact of those houses. That study is now almost 30 years old. I think it's over 25 years old. And no one's disproven it yet, but again, no collection of districts has paid the money to have it redone, especially as we all wait to see what the new normal is after the pandemic.
May I comment? I can help comment on the real estate perspective for that. So Lakewood Prairie, they are continuing to build out the duplexes that are there. And then right across the street in Sable Ridge, there will be some development happening there in the next couple of years, too. So that will continue to grow Jones right there.
Yeah, I, it's been a little while since I've seen proposed new phases of Sable Ridge, but it does, like, they've been trying for a little while and I just, I don't think anything's gotten past, you know, approval or anything like that. But there are more phases of Sable Ridge to build out. Other questions? All right, we are into administrative reports. Mrs. Robinson, do you have anything else? All right, we are into administrative reports. Mrs. Robinson, you have anything else this evening? It just, I know we, Mr. Wyson couldn't be here. I think his B&amp;G report is in there. The stairs are actually, you know, the entrance to this facility is set to be done on Wednesday, or at least the concrete will be poured. Please don't walk out on Wednesday. And then the lift itself, do we, what was the timeline for the actual elevator?
That will be, work will begin on August 18th, but that will be like a two-week waiting period. The bulbs will be to happen in the light.
Okay. So there we go. We will have stairs by the time we have another meeting in this building. We won't have people trying to wander around the, the underground lair of District Office. So, Dr. Chazrick, did you have anything else this evening? Like I said, Mr. Sousa's report, I don't know, did it make it in last minute? Yeah, he emailed that in very late this afternoon, but Mrs. Shanholzer did include it. Dr. Staub, do you have anything else?
I only wanted to add that we were notified last Thursday afternoon that we received another grant, and this one is a community-based grant. It is from the Community Foundation of Grundy County. It's the Gerald D. Abel Endowment, and we received a grant of $12,000, which is going to go towards professional development for our non-certified staff primarily, but we can also include certified staff in it for a program called Playworks that helps our staff utilize like problem-solving skills and peer interaction skills through play. So we're very excited for that. It's one of the grants that we've been looking at through, that are community-based, to help bring some additional programming and support to our staff and students. That's it.
You know, I saw in one of the reports that we're replacing doors at the junior high. Will that be done over Christmas break?
I don't, I, we haven't even bid out the project yet. They've given us an estimate of the 14,135 is in my head. But now that this has been approved, we have to send it to the state for the state to also say that yes, this is eligible for life safety. So it'll be a little while before we even start to schedule that.
Sorry to go backwards for technology. I know Aaron's not here. There's a piece on there about a grant, the $300,000. Is that items we've ordered already, or is that money for additional items this summer?
So we're speaking of the digital equity grant, the third round of it, yeah.
Yeah. So we didn't know this was coming. So it's the third round of the digital equity grant. We have received it the last two years, but we were, really, we weren't expecting it. And then news just came out. So we have until June of 2024 to spend it. So we'll start the, the new proposals that Eric will begin, or Aaron, sorry, I don't know where that came from, that Aaron will bring to you. He'll incorporate that, those funds into, into the proposals.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
My only things to mention is, Mrs. Shanholzer wanted me to make sure, remember, next month, you need to be here at 5 o'clock for the board pictures. So they, make sure that you do not miss the call for the photo shoot, or she will find you very much. And I also wanted to commend Jalisa Wilson on getting our, the, the first edition of our new district newsletter, should have gone out today to, to the parents and families of the district. That will also be posted on our website for those people that aren't on our email list. So that's available for anyone in our community to read about the things happening in the district. And Mrs. Robinson has plenty on the district finances on there as well. So lots of good information. And Ms. Wilson was instrumental in making all of the, the little written Google Docs that we sent her look very professional and much more engaging than, than the little basic Word documents that we sent her. So well done, and I hope the community finds that to be a valuable resource. And other than that, I just want to wish all of our family, students, and staff a very happy beginning to the holiday season. We have parent-teacher conferences going on this evening and as well as tomorrow morning, and then we are shut down for the remainder of the week. So we wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, and we will see, hope to see everybody safe and sound next Monday. Any comments from the board?
I did want to echo something you just said. I know Ms. Wilson's not here, but I saw the newsletter just before I came here. It, like you said, professional, it screams professionalism, and I think it was very well done. So I'm sure she'll hear, hear from you or hear about it from us.
If there are no other comments, we do not have anything for executive session tonight.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Aye.
Aye.